It was in the last meeting, right?
Right.
Well.
I'm not sure if we have.
We have.
Notice the public hearing.
It is that he comes in and goes.
So you don't have the TSA for East Main Street.
No.
Right?
The question.
We only have four stories.
You're waiting.
No.
Waited for you.
Yeah. Okay. We're gonna get started. We're gonna call a meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a couple items on the agenda tonight. The public hearing for Reeves' minor subdivision has been removed from the agenda at the request of the applicant, so that will not be discussed tonight. And also, the resolution for Vista's at Bating Hollow eighty-nine will not be considered tonight at the request of the applicant. So if anyone's here for those two items, they will not be a topic of discussion tonight. Yes, and that was already posted. Kajaski Minor Subdivision will be postponed also. So anyone here for those, you're welcome to stay, but they will not be considered tonight. Okay, welcome to the September seventh, two thousand seventeen Town of Riverhead Planning Board Meeting. First item on our agenda tonight is a discussion item for Bricksmore Retail Shops at Riverhead.
How are you?
First of all, we'd like to report, I think things are going pretty well out of Bricksmore. I don't know that you've received any complaints as far as I'm aware, and I'm sure Jeff and Fran does. We're here before tonight because we have a few minor modifications that we're asking the site plans to be amended. The Far Building to the South, which is Building C-two, is being, we're requesting that it be shifted eight feet to the west. And that's to allow a compactor to be located behind the store at the request of the tenants. By shifting that building eight feet to the west, we are going to be losing about two-hundred-and-ninety-one square feet of landscaping in the front of the store, but we're still maintaining that jogged frontal walk, which is what the ARB wanted and what the town planning staff had requested, to give it not such a massing look of buildings across the front. So by maintaining that jog, we are moving it eight feet west, but it maintains the cut to give it some diversity in the frontal, from the view, the elevation from the front.
Is construction starting on?
The construction, I don't know if that construction on that building is started. The construction started on the Olca Building, which is Building E, which is not on this, Building D, excuse me.
The constructor I know is A, B, and C-one. They're doing the grating and leveling around here, and obviously these have the improvements, drainage improvement, utility improvement. And then D, which is the Olca, is also on the construction.
Construction has not started yet on C-two.
That's obscene over the wall. The garbage compactor, that wasn't proposed originally?
So, proposed originally, we had a compactor for the Marshall Home Goods and the Sierra Trading Post as a tenant request. The new tenant here has requested also a compactor. And with the eight-foot shift, if we didn't have that, it would've been in the way of this loading dock. And that's why we had to shift it down to eight feet to get it up with for that compactor.
Then when they came in for the site plan application, they did not have a tenant for that unit yet, so they got a tenant, and then they came and asked them to put a garbage compactor, which is called the request for the amendment.
We still maintain forty-three feet from the edge of that loading dock for the edge to the dumpster, which is more than enough room for the trucks. And then the eight feet here, this went down, we still have twenty-four feet again. It's an ARB question and something that the planning staff wanted with this, and we still have twenty-four feet there. So it's still giving that depth.
Okay, so you mentioned landscaping, so what do we lose for the landscaping?
We're losing some landscaping along the front of the building.
So, I'm just gonna flip this to what we originally had. A little bit closer. So we had more landscaping in front, and it kinda came out in this L, and then we just had a smaller tree pit here. What we changed it to was we shortened these, came out longer, we shortened those up, still keeping within the same context of what we had, and then we made an L shape here to try to add as much landscape as that.
So with the loss of eight feet, there couldn't be as, landscaping can't be as deep?
Right. It was really the length of these that got shortened. The foundation plan remained the same.
And some of the other modifications, the interior of C-two is also gonna have a mezzanine, twenty-five hundred square foot mezzanine inside the building. Doesn't change the footprint of the building, it just changes the interior floor plans. We are also requesting that we modify the grading behind Olca, and maybe Courtney can explain that modification.
Did you change your square footage in that building? I know you moved it eight feet. Does it still the same?
No, it just shifted eight feet forward. The square footage of the building, the footprint of the building is the same, but the interior is going to have an additional twenty-five hundred square foot at a mezzanine level.
What's gonna be on that mezzanine level?
I'm not sure, and I wish it was here.
I'm just asking for the sanitary calculations, if they're gonna impact the sanitary.
We did look into it, I wanna say the majority of it was storage, to that less gownage. We are actually at a higher capacity right now, so we did look into it. We also submitted to the Health Department for their climate review.
And you also increased the size of the sewer pipe from four inches to six inches.
So.
For the grading behind Olca?
The grading behind also, there is a transformer pad here. The spot shot we had on the as-built was off about a foot, so we had to reuse the re-grading, still keeping it within the same context. And what we did is we actually added a drain in here to make sure that the water went away from the transformer pad, as well as the loading dock. So, so minor re-grading over there.
And we relocated a fire hydrant at the Fire Marshal's request?
So at the Fire Marshal's request, we originally had a fire hydrant in the corner. I thought for at the time, we already had this bricklayer wall built, and we, or designed rather, and that he built it, he could clear it, they wouldn't hit it. The Fire Marshal asked that it be, instead, be pushed back into the wall. So, within construction, we redesigned to set that back in.
And as Jeff noted, we have increased the size of the sewer pipe from four inches to six inches.
And that's on all the tenants.
That's why we're here tonight, requesting and...
There's one last change with the electric cars.
Oh, yeah, the electric car outlets, yeah, we relocated those.
So those originally were up here, we since moved them over here.
The charges, right?
Yeah.
So, your utility plant was revising? And that'll be submitted?
Yeah, we just showed them on our site plan, we didn't have the electric garriator or whatever.
And that's the request.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Vinnie has reviewed it, he has no comments. ARB recommends its approval, and Steph believes the changes are minor in nature, consisting of the plan being presented. And you have a resolution on pretty later this evening.
Okay, we'll bring up on the resolutions. Thank you. Okay, next item is actually item two on the agenda, Grapes and Greens, public hearing on an amended site plan.
Good evening, Chairman Carey, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Brian Lewis, I am representative for the Riverhead Cider House. We have submitted a site plan amendment application seeking to amend the site plan in really, what boils down to four respects, one of which is really the primary focus, as I understand it today, which is the addition of approximately thirty, three thousand one hundred and eighty-six square foot patio area in the outer north side of the building, or if you're familiar with the cider house, in the tasting room, the northeast side of the tasting room itself. That area is framed by a two-foot masonry wall that is running parallel with Sound Avenue. And also, as part of the application, we're asking to mount speakers to pipe music to the outside. And everything is more or less set forth in our prior submissions and during the prior comment period, I just wanna highlight a few points on this particular issue, just in anticipation of some of the comments that we may expect. First off, this is a seven acre parcel, it is adjacent to Sound Avenue on the north and Osborne on the east. There are no immediate neighbors, particularly in this area, there's only one immediate area to the west. And so the area of this patio is buffered by both Sound, Osborne, and the apple trees that have been planted to the east. We have done some noise testing to date. The speakers at issue are about seven by eleven, so about the size of this piece of paper, there are two of them. For those of you who know these things, they're a hundred and fifty watts, doesn't mean a lot to me, but I do know that we've done noise testing of these speakers, we've put them up to the highest capacity, we have tested with a decibel meter at the outer edge of the property, they are within code at their highest level at the edge of the property. If we leave the property and go to any of our neighbors, whether it be across Sound or across Osborn, we're actually not able to detect the sound from them using the meter. We actually can't detect anything over ambient, if there's any traffic on Sound, we have to wait for the cars to stop.
You're not looking to put live music out there, or just speakers?
Just speakers, and that's, thank you for asking, there's one point that I do wanna make, because I read the Riverhead local too in the comments section, so I'm aware of some of the comments and concerns that the public might have. There has always been, it has always been anticipated, there was gonna be some public access of this facility for patrons. The discussions that have been happening over the years were about the scope of that public access, the limits that we wanted to set on it. You know, we wanted to plant an apple orchard, we want to have eventually tours that could look at the apples and then also see how the apples are processed into the cider, that's sort of part of the things we want to be able to offer. So there was always contemplated that there was gonna be some sort of outdoor access. What was done in the site plan, I'm sorry, in the site plan itself, was try to define the limits of that access. So that is why there are limits on no fairs or outdoor events of that nature. The issue with the music, my client and I, we've been talking about this, we were trying to pinpoint when it changed. It used to say no live music, that was the initial drafts of the site plan. At some point it changed, frankly, I don't know when it happened and it changed and the word "live" was removed. It was, so that's the purpose of this application, is we do wanna pipe music to the outside area. You know, why do we want the outside area? It should be, you know, pretty self-evident, when the weather's nice, we'd like to be able to have our patrons sit outside, enjoy the air, and enjoy the sunshine, and, you know, that's really the purpose here. The patio and the speakers will be of the same limited use of the cideria itself, it closes at nine P.M., it doesn't operate afterwards. As I said, the speakers themselves are small, they're smaller than the ones that you might install in your own backyard. The noise that will come off the property is negligible, if any, and that's essentially the main issue here. Now, there are other aspects of the, oh, let me address one other comment that I have heard, I just wanna address. I do know that there's been some comments that the installation of the patio and the installation of the speakers was done without consulting the planning board, or in violation of the plan itself, that it was done without asking anybody, essentially. And I just wanna correct the record a little bit on that. When we contemplated putting in the patio at the outset, we actually did contact the building department, and we may have asked the wrong question. We asked whether it was permitted to, whether we needed a permit to put in the patio in the APZ, the zone that we're in. And the answer was no, and that was correct. But that's not correct for our parcel. For our parcel, we did have this open site plan, and when we were made aware of it, after we thought that we were lawfully putting in the patio, we were made aware of it, we took it back. But I do think there's a perception that we sort of did what we wanted to do here, but I don't think the public is aware that that had happened, that there was actually a conversation that occurred, and maybe a miscommunication that happened, and that's why the patio had been installed without going through the process that we're going through tonight.
And when you were notified of that, you removed the bricks and covered it with a turf material, right?
Yes, the bricks removed, covered with a turf material, and this application was made to, you know, to have this review process go forward. I'm happy to talk about some of the other aspects of the amendment, but my understanding from our last meeting on July twentieth was that the purpose of the public hearing is really to focus on the exterior aspect of the patio, and that the other issues that were raised in the amendment were non-material and were not gonna be subject to public hearing. So I'll be directed by you all, if there's comments, I'm happy to step up and address them on those other issues, or I could go into that.
We certainly understand them from our work session, but I see that they are still listed in the public hearing, so if you could just touch on them briefly, and then if there's any questions, we could follow up.
Sure, okay, so there were four, broadly speaking, there were four areas that were addressed in our amendment. The first I just discussed, which is the outdoor patio and the speakers and the attendant wall that brackets it in, that's largely one item. The second was changes that were made to what is called on the plans, the grab and go food concession. What had occurred, when it was initially proposed, when the initial site plan went in, we were contemplating certain heating elements. The state law requires that the cideria have certain food available, hot soups, finger foods and the like, that can be eaten without utensils, it's state law. And so what we initially contemplated was a donut machine, a microwave, and a convection oven, soup kettles, food prep stations, and things of that nature. Once we got to actually installing these things, there was a change in state law. In order to install the donut machine, we had to put in something called an ancil, fire suppression and exhaust system, which required us to drill all the way up through the ceiling of the warehouse, and at no small cost. Now, if we were operating a full-service restaurant, and we had grills, and we had fryers, and we had other items like that, then maybe it would've made sense to do. But when we're just doing it for a donut machine, which was frankly, sort of an novelty item that we were building the area around, this sort of a cool thing to see, we opted not to. And so, once that decision was made, we then had to look at what equipment we were going to be using, and the decision was made, instead of doing the donut machine and the convection and microwave oven, which, it looks like a very large, fairly unattractive microwave oven, the decision was made, well, we can relocate the freezer, which is on wheels, out of the public space for ventilation issues and heat issues, it throws off some heat, we can put that behind the warehouse space, so it's out of sight, that opened up some more space, and they were, what we're calling pizza ovens, are really, they're deck ovens, they're technically different than a pizza oven, but they're functionally equivalent to the convection microwave oven that we were contemplating. Everything that we could, that we sell now, every food item that we make now, we could make with the approved equipment, there's no difference. We are not increasing the number of heating elements that we're doing. What we did was we removed the donut machine, we removed the microwave convection oven, we replaced it with the deck ovens, and we replaced it with a pure convection oven. So there's really a substitution, not truly an addition of equipment, and frankly, we chose the deck ovens in part for aesthetics. People are familiar seeing the, it looks like a pizza oven, we didn't have the donut machine to center the food area around, so the thought was, let's put those there in the public view, they look nice, and we reoriented the area of the grab and go around those changes. So, space opened up with the movement of the refrigerator to the other space, we changed the type of oven, and that's where we're at. But, you know, everything that was contemplated when the site plan was approved is still the same. No food is made or manufactured on-site, everything is made off-site, it is heated on-site. Everything that we could've made with those other ovens is what we make now, there's no real change there. This has not become a full-service restaurant, you know, a restaurant just under the town code is something that sole purpose is for food service, that's definitely not this. The food service is ancillary to the cideria and tasting room, that's the primary focus here. We are serving the food that's required by state law. There's no dining room, dedicated dining room, there's no, there's a limited menu, there's limited seating, I don't know if anybody's been there, there are no tables where you can sit and eat, there's a couple of couches, there's small, you know, standing tables with stools around them for drinks, there's no utensils, there's no plates, there's no waitstaff, there's no dishwasher in the kitchen, there's no fryer, there's no grill, there's no stove, there's no broiler. This is a, this is what we're calling a grab and go, what we're doing is we're trying to make the best food we can under those parameters. But like I said, everything is made off-site, delivered on-site, and heated. The other aspects of the plan that were recited in today's notice, the addition of parking spaces. We, there were two areas, one area of the existing parking lot that was never, that was paved and not striped, that is the bulk of the area that is being striped to add spaces, because that was a concern that has always been voiced, was that would there be sufficient parking? Would there, you know, there was at one point some concern that people might try to park along Sound Avenue, although that's never happened, it's not been a problem for us, and, but we figured there was a space available that could be striped, so we wanna stripe it. There was also an area that was an old easement that had been purchased along with the transaction of the property years ago, when we repaved the parking lot, we paved that area as well, that added another roughly ten spaces. And so that was, that's that aspect of the application. Just to update the board, last time we were here, we were talking about the spaces had been striped, but they had not been striped to Riverhead code, unfortunately, they'd been striped by our, rendered by Islip code, which is smaller. We had made the decision to correct that and re-stripe them, so we're not gonna, because the alternative was just removing the spaces altogether, we thought about that and we figured it's better to have more spaces than not, so they're being re-stripped. We thought they'd actually been re-stripped this week, but we're told it's gonna happen tomorrow to meet Riverhead code, and also, you know, again, alleviate any concern that there may be parking on Sound Avenue. The last item was just general changes that were made to the actual landscaping features that were installed. The plan itself called for specific varieties of trees in different areas, and there were changes along the way based on consultation with our arborist and our, frankly, our neighbor who's also a nursery owner. So, just going through a couple of the areas that there were changes, there was one species of tree denoted to be planted along Sound Avenue, the same number of trees were planted, but we changed it to a different species, the reason being that the trees that used to be there would constantly grow into the power lines, and there would be one of those big circular things that had to be trimmed and cut. The trees that we planted will grow shorter and should not impact the power lines and will not need that maintenance and will look a lot better. The location of the apple orchard was changed, it was shifted over slightly, and the size was made slightly bigger because our arborist said that the trees should've been planted further apart than we had in the plan, so that was done. And there were certain trees to the southwest, southeast, well, really just to the south, that we'll recommend that we take out because they could block the sun towards the trees we're trying to grow, so those were removed, and really just to maximize the southern exposure. There were also trees that were along our western property line with our nursery neighbor, a few of those started to die off. Our nursery neighbor told us that they had contracted some sort of fungus or disease, and he asked us to take them all out, he did not want that spreading to his nursery, and so we did so, and that instead has been removed, and I believe that's been mulched with some plantings over there rather than, it's been reseeded. So, again, I think about half of the trees were dying or died, the other ones showed signs of this disease or fungus, and so we removed them for that reason. And I believe that are the main areas of the hearing today.
Could you state what kind of trees you replaced the front door trees with? The lower growing trees?
I don't know that they were lower, I think they were more left to grow out.
So when they're on the...
Do you provide that to you?
I'm just curious if they're on the approved list of...
I believe...
And maybe a miscommunication that happened and that's why the patio had been installed without going through the process that we're going through tonight.
And when, um, when you were notified of that, you removed the bricks and covered it with a turf material, right?
Yes, the bricks removed, covered with a turf material, and this application was made to, you know, to have this review process go forward. I'm happy to talk about some of the other aspects of the, uh, of the amendment, but my understanding from our last meeting on July 20th was that the purpose of the public hearing is really to focus on the exterior aspect of the patio and that the other issues that were raised in the amendment were, um, non-material and were not going to be subject to public hearing. So I'll be directed by you all. If there's comments, I'm happy to step up and address them on those other issues or I could go into that.
We certainly understand them from our work session, but I see that they are still listed in the, uh, public hearing. So if you could just touch on them briefly.
Sure.
And then if there's any questions, we could follow up.
Sure. Okay, so, so there were four, broadly speaking, there were four areas that were addressed in our amendment. The first I just discussed was the outdoor patio and the speakers and the attendant wall that brackets it in. That's largely one item. Uh, the, the second was cha- changes that were made to the, what we, what is called on the plans, the grab and go, um, uh, food concession. Um, what, what had occurred, when it was initially, uh, proposed, when the initial site plan went in, we were contemplating, um, certain heating elements. Uh, the state law requires that the cideri, uh, have certain food available, hot soups, uh, finger foods and the like, um, that can be eaten without utensils. It's state law. Um, and so what we initially contemplated was a donut machine, uh, a microwave and a convection oven, um, soup kettles, food prep stations and, and things of that nature. Once, once we got to actually installing these things, there was a change in state law. Uh, in order to install the donut machine, we had to put in something called an ancil, uh, fire suppression and exhaust system, which required us to drill all the way up through the ceiling of the warehouse, uh, and, um, at, at no small cost. Now, if we were operating a full-service restaurant and we had grills and we had fryers and we had other items like that, uh, then may, maybe it would have made sense to do. Uh, but when we're just doing it for a donut machine, which was frankly sort of an novelty item that we were building the area around as sort of a cool thing to, to see, uh, we opted not to. And so, once that decision was made, uh, we then had to, to, to look at what, what equipment we were going to be using and the decision was made, instead of doing the donut machine and the, the convection and microwave oven, which, uh, if, it looks like a very large, uh, fairly unattractive, uh, uh, microwave oven. Uh, the, the decision was made, well, uh, we can relocate the freezer, uh, which is on wheels, uh, out of the, 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 the public space for ventilation issues and, and heat issues. It was, it throws off some heat. We can put that behind the, the warehouse space that was out of sight. That opened up some more space, uh, and they were, what we're calling pizza ovens are really, they're deck ovens. They're, they're technically different than a, than a pizza oven, um, but they, they're functionally equivalent to the, uh, convection microwave oven that we were contemplating. Everything that we could, that we sell now, every, every food item that we make now, uh, we, we could make with the approved, uh, the approved equipment. There's, there's no difference. We, we are not increasing the, the, uh, the number of heating elements that we're, that we're doing. What we did was we removed the, uh, the, the, the donut machine, we removed the microwave convection oven, we replaced it with the deck ovens and we replaced it with a pure convection oven. Um, so there, there's really a substitution, not, not truly an addition of, of equipment. And, and frankly, we, we chose the deck ovens in part for aesthetics. People are familiar seeing the, it looks like a pizza oven. Uh, we didn't have the donut she, uh, uh, machine to center the, the, uh, the food area around, so the thought was let's put those there in the public view. They, they look nice, uh, and we reoriented the area of the, uh, of the grab and go around those changes. Uh, so, oh, space opened up with the movement of the refrigerator to the other space. We changed the, the type of oven and, and that's, that's where we're at. Um, but, you know, everything that was contemplated when the site plan was approved is still the same. No, no food is, is, is made or manufactured onsite. Everything is made offsite, it is heated onsite. Um, everything that we could have made with those other ovens is what we make now. There's no, there's no real change there. Um, this has not become a full-service restaurant. Um, uh, you know, a, a restaurant just under the town code is something that sole purpose is for food service. That's definitely not, not this. Um, the, the, the food service is ancillary to the, the, the cideri and tasting room. That's, that's the primary focus here. Uh, we are serving the food that's required by state law. Um, there's no dining room, dedicated dining room. There's no, uh, there's a limited menu, there's limited seating. I don't know if anybody's been there. Uh, there are no tables where you can sit and eat. There's a couple of couches. There's, uh, small, uh, you know, standing tables with, with stools around them for, for drinks. Um, there's no utensils, there's no plates, there's no waitstaff, uh, there's no dishwasher in the kitchen, there's no fryer, there's no grill, there's no stove, uh, there's no broiler. Um, this is a, um, this is what we're calling a grab and go. Uh, what we're doing is we're, we're trying to, to, to make the best food we can under those parameters. Um, but like I said, everything is made offsite, delivered onsite and heated. The other aspects of the plan, uh, that are, were recited in, in today's, uh, notice, uh, the addition of parking spaces. Um, we, there, there were two areas, one, one area of, of the existing parking lot that was never, uh, that was paved and not striped. Uh, that is the, the bulk of the area that is being striped to add spaces, because that was a concern that has, has always been voiced was, uh, that, uh, would there be sufficient parking? Uh, would there, uh, you know, there's, there, there was at one point some concern that people might try to park along Sound Avenue, although that's never happened. It's not, not, not been a problem for us. Um, and, uh, but we fi- we figured there was a space available that could be striped, so we want to stripe it. Uh, there was also an area that was a, um, an old easement that had been, uh, purchased, uh, along with the transaction of the property years ago, uh, when we repaved the parking lot, we paved that area as well. That, that added another roughly 10 spaces. Uh, and so that was, that, that's, that aspect of the application. Uh, just, just to update the, the board, um, last time we were here, we were talking about, uh, that the spaces had been striped, but they had not been striped to Riverhead Code. Unfortunately, they've been, been striped by our, our, rendered by, uh, to Islet Code, uh, which is smaller. Uh, we had made the decision to, to correct that and restripe them. So we're not gonna, because the, the alternative was just removing the spaces altogether. Uh, we, we, we thought about that and we figured it's better to have more spaces than not, so they're being restriped. We thought they'd actually been restriped this week, uh, but we're told it's gonna happen tomorrow, um, to, to, to meet, uh, uh, Riverhead Code, uh, and also, you know, again alleviate any concern that there may be parking on Sound Avenue. Um, the last item was, uh, it was just general changes that were made to the, to the actual landscaping features that were installed. The, the plan itself called for specific varieties of trees, uh, in different areas, um, and there were changes along the way based on consultation with our arborist and our, um, frankly, our neighbor who's, who's also a, um, a nursery owner. Um, so, uh, just going through a couple of the areas that, that there were changes. Uh, there was, uh, one species of tree, uh, denoted to be planted along Sound Avenue. The, the same number of trees were planted, but we, we changed a different, to a different species. The reason being that the, the trees that used to be there would constantly grow into the power lines and there would be one of those big, uh, circular things that had to be trimmed and cut. The trees that we planted will grow shorter and should not impact the power lines and will not need that maintenance and will look a lot better. Um, the location of the, the apple orchard, um, was changed. It was, it was shifted over slightly, um, and the, and the size was made slightly bigger because our arborist said that the, the tree should have been planted further apart than we had in the plan. Uh, so that was done. Um, and the, uh, there were certain trees to the southwest, southeast, well, really just to the south, that we'll recommend that we take out because they could block the sun towards the trees we're trying to grow. So those were removed, um, and, uh, really just to maximize the southern exposure. Uh, there were also trees that, uh, were along our western property line with our, our, our nursery neighbor. Um, a few of those started to die off. Uh, our nursery neighbor told us that they had contracted some sort of fungus or disease and he asked us to take them all out. Uh, he did not want that spreading to his, his nursery and so we did so, so, and that, that instead has been, uh, removed. And I believe that's been mulched with some plantings over there rather than, it's, it's been reseeded. Um, so, again, that, that, I think about half of the trees were dying or died. Uh, the other ones showed signs of this disease or fungus and so we removed them for that reason. Um, and, um, I believe that are the, the main areas, uh, of the, of the hearing today.
Could you state what kind of trees you replaced the front yard trees with? Your lower growing trees? So state it.
I don't know that they were lower. I think they were more, uh, less, less than a grown height.
So they're on the...
Do you provide that to you?
I'm just curious if they're on the approved list of...
I, I believe they are. Maybe Mr. Murphy knows.
We brought them off. We brought them in.
Okay, sure.
I could supply that. They, they, they don't grow shorter, they grow tighter and high, you know, just as high, but, but tighter, so they're not going to spread into the power lines.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any other questions from the board?
Okay, the public, uh, anyone want to address the board on this site plan amendment? Please come to the podium to state your name for the record.
Larry Sims, South Jamesport. I'm speaking for Save Main Road. I'd like to thank the board for this hearing. I know there was considerable pressure to skip it entirely or to limit discussion to the patio issue. Holding a public hearing was the right thing to do and I appreciate the opportunity to address the changes and discuss the project history. Before I give you my comments, I'd like to read a couple of comments by others. The first is Dawn Thomas writing as Deputy Town Attorney. She is referencing other documents that I don't have, but I think the meaning will be clear. This was in early May. A code enforcement officer was dispatched Friday evening to respond to these complaints. In addition, we have been receiving many complaints regarding parking along Baywood Drive. We confirmed that music was playing in the outdoor area. Apparently a masonry wall is being constructed in that area which creates a convenient sitting area. I know everyone wanted to have this be a nice venue for agritourism and other agricultural activities and it was supposed to be an aid to the local ag businesses, but there are some things that we should address since it looks like it's moving in the wrong direction. The further this gets without being addressed, the closer we get to Vineyard 48. Second comment is from Councilwoman Giglio. I am completely disgusted that we now have a Vineyard 48 in Riverhead on Sound Avenue, which I know has nothing to do with you, and I should have said that she's writing to Brad Hammond and Mr. Carey. Uh, but here's how you can help. They are currently in violation of their site plan approval in that they have planted trees in the front yard that obstruct vision from cars seeking to head west on Sound Avenue. Brad had them remove the 5,000 square foot patio that they installed behind the trees to the east of the building prior to the issuance of the temporary CO, because it was in direct violation of their approval and they said they would remove the trees when weather permitted. They are now using that outside area as a public access in direct violation of the site plan conditions and the covenants that were filed and have added a two-foot-high brick wall with a slate top surrounding the non-permitted outside area for seating. There are buses and limos parking on Baywood Drive and people running across Sound Avenue to get to the Cider House and are again running across to get back to their bus or limo after having a few glasses of cider or beer from their 48 taps. Very dangerous. Cars are parking along Baywood obstructing the roadway and when residents try to get out of Baywood, the travel lane for emergency services is obstructed. The building is laced with banners. They put a commercial pizza oven in after they received their final building and fire marshal inspection. They don't have health department approval for the kitchen and we continue to allow them to operate. They opened for two weeks without a CO and without health department approval. They are not good neighbors. They have continually used that outside area public access since their opening and now have outdoor speakers blasting music. Most importantly, they are not in ag use or in ag production which is in direct conflict with the zoning and the memo from the town attorney written in August 2014. Please have them remove the trees and outdoor speakers that are not part of the site plan approval. That was in late April from Jody Giglio. Everything else is from me. Vineyard 48 is clearly not what you had in mind when approving this project a year ago. I have faith in that. And I believe it's a prime reason that you impose stringent covenants in doing so. Unlike zoning, which can be readily set aside by action of the zoning board or sometimes the town board, covenants attached to the deed and run with the land. They're designed to be in place forever. As much as I didn't like your decision to approve this project last year, I respected the thoughtful way in which you did it. Principal covenants on this site include: no special events, no outdoor music, no full-service restaurant or catering, no expansion of tasting room or public access areas. Tasting room and all public activities closed by 9:00 PM. A few of the many additional specific conditions are: all signage submitted for permits prior to installation, all outdoor lighting must be town code compliant, and parking shall be, shall be maintained pursuant to town code. I can't speak to whether the closing time restriction is being honored. Every other covenant mentioned has been breached. It's impossible to understand why this board would impose a long list of covenants which responded to legitimate concerns expressed by the community and then simply erased them a year later, which is what this resolution would do. I'll examine them in turn. Events. The full prohibition reads, "There shall be no special events such as weddings, festivals or fairs held on the subject property." Period. Seems straightforward. You approved the site plan which incorporates this covenant on April 7th last year. Less than a week later, Mr. King held a massive wine tasting event that disrupted traffic for miles and required police presence. Grapes and Greens shuttled guests from parking at Great Rock, but attendees' cars still, still lined both sides of Sound Avenue near the facility. Local residents could not get in or out of their driveways. Grapes and Greens ran an intensive industry marketing campaign to build attendance at this event, which was estimated at up to 1,000 people in a large outdoor tent, but they didn't bother to notify the town at all and they didn't bother to get permits. Code enforcement did not arrive until after the event because it was a weekend and nobody was on duty and they could not write a violation. Had they done so, it would have set Mr. King back just $250, which is, in my view, a nominal cost of doing business on this scale. The cost of the police response, which was required, is on the taxpayers, but that's minor compared to the inconvenience and delays suffered by residents and tourists trying to make their way east. Second covenant: music. The town has cited Cider House for adding outdoor speakers when the covenant clearly states no outdoor music. Mr. King's team responded by arguing at your last meeting and again today, we listened to Mr. Lewis, say that the, the speakers are small and not capable of playing very loudly. Uh, Mr. Lewis then claimed not to understand why the covenant reads no outdoor music, saying it should have read no live outdoor music. If that's true, and it's not indicated by any of the documentation I've seen, but if that's true, I suggest Mr. Lewis did not do a good job of proof writing, proofreading on behalf of his client. In any case, it's clear that that's not what the covenant says. Whatever Mr. Lewis intended his client to sign, he made crystal clear at your last meeting that they now want to have outdoor music both recorded and live. Now, that's contrary to what he told us a few minutes ago, but given the other things that weren't supposed to happen that have all happened, I certainly have no faith that there will be no live music outdoors.
Did you say that was communicated to us at our work session?
That's what I heard.
I didn't hear that at the work session.
I watched the entire video last night.
And you're saying that they told us that they were gonna have live outside music?
No, what I believe he said was that they would like to. I didn't hear anyone say that they would do it. And, you know, let's make that a minor point, okay? No restaurant, much more significant. The, the bickering over what constitutes a restaurant would be entertaining if the consequences weren't so serious. At your last meeting, here's what Brad Hammond said, quote, "Amanda McDonald for the Food Control Unit of Suffolk County Health Services informed me they did a joint review with ag and markets and it was determined by both of them that the food service, the level of preparation, the offerings, everything rose to the level of requiring Suffolk County Department of Health Services food control. It was not just a staff vending operation. It went above that. The reason why you haven't got anything in writing yet is because we're here, this is at your July meeting, to make sure the planning board is aware of this level of preparation. I've already been notified by wastewater management and food control that we should have some sort of approval from them for you to go on." That was Brad speaking. He went on to explain that because of the way the site plan was approved, looking at the zoning and looking specifically at the conditions that say you cannot operate a, a standard restaurant, he issued a permit without getting wastewater management and food control to weigh in on what the occupant is actually doing. As the town's chief inspector, he said he's now in a position where he's been told that Cider House operations as built, very different from the plans you approved, need approvals from these agencies. Mr. King's attorneys argue that this isn't the case and they said that the health department is ready to bless this operation if you, the planning board, say it's okay. Uh, they did not at your last meeting and there's nothing in the file to indicate that they have a letter from the health department to that effect. I've not seen any other documentation to support that statement. They just talked. Respectfully, I think it would be a grave mistake for you to sit at this table and give equal weight to the testimony of town employees whose only job is to safeguard the town's interests and enforce its rules and to opinions and hearsay from applicants and their attorneys whose only goal is their own profit. I'm in business, there's nothing wrong with making a profit, but that doesn't mean you should accept everything I say is true. That's why I am talking about what the experts have said. Covenants are promises and, and there are many, many promises by this applicant that have already been broken. Even if you accepted his answers at, and comments at face value last time around, I believe it would be foolish to do so now. With regard to specific food service observations, Brad Hammond clarified that he was not on, onsite himself, but he was simply relaying what was reported to him when ag and markets and the health department inspected. These agencies told the town, they told him, that the operation is more than taking prepackaged frozen pizza and reheating. They call it cooking. They observe what's being cooked and how it's being cooked. Absent any evidence to the contrary, I suggest it's incumbent on you to accept the expert opinions provided by town staff, whether their own or those of experts that they consult. It would be imprudent to ignore their input. Mr. King then said, or his attorneys, I don't recall which, that the town has been calling the health department to tattle, objecting to his operations. Brad said, "To the contrary, the health department reached out to him." I can't give benefit of doubt to an applicant, to an applicant who's speaking in his own interest and I choose to believe the town's chief building inspector. I suggest you do likewise. The debate on whether or not Cider House is a restaurant then wandered into the ludicrous. One of Mr. King's attorneys stated, which we heard again today, this is a quote from July, "What we are doing is whatever will comply with the farm cideri law, which is food that can be eaten while walking around." He then got even more explicit. There's no utensils onsite, there's no plates. And today he added that there are no tables that you can sit down at. This is a photograph, and if you like, I can send high-res color photos via Emily tomorrow. This is a photograph of a table with chairs at Cider House. On the table are plates. This is a photograph of a gentleman walking around the patio with a plate full of food. These are two segments from the menu board. Under starters, it lists soup and chili. Now, you might argue that you could drink soup from a cup. I've never seen anybody serve chili in a cup. You can't drink it with a straw. I believe utensils are used. Under salads, there are 10 listings. Maybe some of them are finger food, but Mediterranean orzo salad and quinoa salad, those are not finger foods. If they're serving these, they must be with utensils and they're probably on plates. Mr. King's attorney then said in July, "There's no table service, there's no waiters, none of those earmarks of a traditional restaurant." And we pretty much heard the same thing a few minutes ago. This is a photo of an employee standing at a, at a trolley or four-wheel cart. She's wearing an apron, she's wearing rubber gloves. In front of her is a large bowl of avocado and smaller bowls of onions and tomatoes and all the other ingredients that you put in guacamole. There's a sombrero hanging on the side of the cart. The cart is nowhere near the grab and go snack bar. It is out where the patrons are at the tables. Now, keep in mind that this was spotted on a random visit on a random weekend. There were no special events or private parties, at least on that day. By all appearances, this was business as usual. Personally, I don't care whether you call this employee a waiter, a table chef, or a food performance artist. She is not manning a cash register for people that are grabbing a pre-wrapped sandwich from a cooler, which is what we were led to believe this business was about. This is not grab and go. This is serious food service. Some would call it upscale food service, but involves food preparation in front of the customer, even at their table. So respectfully, I have to say that everything we've been hearing about whether or not this is a restaurant is just false. Catering. Here's another photo. I know you can't make it out, but it shows a large dining room and in the front of the, the table and chairs is a sign that says, "Close for a private event." There was no private event the day I happened to be there, but clearly this is where they have private events. The approved site plan shows that space as offices. There are two offices side by side that do not exist. They built a dining room. Are private events that are held in this space use, do they use only the items that are available from the snack bar? I don't know. Maybe they do. But I think it would be wise, it would be prudent to examine the actual menus that are offered to private event clients to confirm that there are no other options. If they are offering things that are not available at the onsite snack bar, which I guess is the case, because if I were renting that space, I'd certainly want higher-end food, then it's catering, which is expressly prohibited by your covenant. We're nearing the end of the covenants. The next is no expansion of public access areas. Now, when Jeff Murphy brought up the outdoor patio as a priority at your last meeting, one of Mr. King's attorneys quickly said, "That is a change. We would like to add that." And then the patio was routinely discussed. What I would like to understand is where is your indignation? Where is it? An owner ignored the site plan that you had just approved. He built a huge patio, 5,000 square feet for commercial use. He received a violation. On receiving the violation, he ripped up the patio, finagled a temporary certificate of occupancy, and immediately after he had the temporary CO, he put the patio back. Again without permits, except this time he added a masonry wall around the entire perimeter. We're not talking about a guy who decides to throw a few picnic tables on a grassy lawn next to his building to see whether that might be popular. Rather, we're talking about a guy with big-time designers and contractors who leveled, prepared and carpeted over 3,000 square feet, built a two-foot-high wall roughly 100 feet long, filled the area with furniture and has been operating, I presume very profitably, for more than six months without permits. Then he comes in here to say he would like to add what he has already built. Nobody's indignant about that and it's troubling.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
We don't do enforcement as, as a planning board.
I understand that and I'll get there. I understand. What I do think you should not do is respond a, as though that behavior is routine and acceptable. It's not. At the July meeting, Mr. King and his attorney stressed multiple times that the 3,200 square foot patio is not visible from Sound Avenue. In fact, the patio is located just 30 feet off the avenue and the only reason it's not visible be, is because they added a 100-foot living wall of Arbor Vitae that are not... living wall of Arbor Vitae that are not on the approved site plan. So, you're using one deviation from the approved plan to mask, to conceal another. I don't think that's a good thing. I don't think that's acceptable. Mr. Lewis argued in July and again today that it was always contemplated that people would walk around outside, and he said it really doesn't matter whether the area is paved or not. I don't know what was contemplated. I only know what the covenants his client actually agreed to say. These things are put in writing because words have meaning. The attorney's speculation as to what people may have been thinking is without merit, it's without value, and it's certainly without proof. Signage, relatively minor. Mr. King has not bothered to explain, nor did his attorneys, why he didn't get permits for the giant sculptural apple at the front door, but he did state clearly why he doesn't want to pay the required signed permit fees. He said that all his neighbors have giant ears of corn advertising their products, and they don't have to pay the fees. He wants equal treatment because he insists he's a farmer. The buildings department correctly views Mr. King as a property owner who purchased a massive, non-conforming industrial building on seven acres and proceeded to plant a couple of acres of trees, which won't bear fruit for years and will only supply a small fraction of his needs when they do. I think that to call him a farmer would be a huge affront to the many real farmers in our town. Lighting. As installed-
Mr. Sims?
Yes?
At that meeting that you're referring to, after that conversation, Mr. King, and I'm not defending him, did say that he would pay for a permit. So, you know, you're telling half of the story here, and it's not accurate on record to tell half a story. He said he would pay for the permit because of what the building department considered it. Non-agricultural, he says, "Well, then I'll pay for the permit." You're leaving that out.
I am. I'm conscious of time. I'm already taking up a lot of your time and the audience's time. I definitely heard him say that. I think it's significantly more important that he violated the covenant in the first place. The covenant says, "You don't put up signage until you get approval and permits." There's no explanation of why he did it. Even at your hearing, he did not say, "Well, yeah, I'll pay it now, but here's why I didn't do it." Why is that okay? It's not excusable. As installed, the outdoor lighting was not per plans and specs. It was not town code compliant, and it was not dark skies compliant. This was easily corrected, but no reasons were given for the deviation, just like with signage. Parking. Fifty-nine spaces were added without consulting or informing the town. Some were on existing asphalt, some were newly paved on areas that are supposed to be grass. All were substandard in terms of size, apparently by accident. They're nine-by-18 spaces instead of 10-by-20-foot spaces. I think had the town been consulted, some of these accidents would not have happened. Two quick miscellaneous examples, and I'll wrap up. Jeff Murfree explained to you last meeting that the omission of large walk-in refrigerators was highlighted as a significant change because the walk-ins are on the approved site plan, but they were not actually built. Mr. King and his attorneys talked over and over about how the refrigerators are modular, movable, and located in the warehouse space now, so it shouldn't matter. Nobody should care. Somehow, the fact that removal of these refrigerators made the snack bar area nearly twice the size submitted to and approved by you was not mentioned. The board, your board, should have been consulted on a change of that magnitude. Separately, Mr. King specifically agreed to maintain a buffer of large specimen trees on one side of the orchard. The orchard was moved. He had also promised that his architect would walk the site with Jeff, and they would jointly handpick trees to cull. This was spelled out because it was deemed important for the town. Instead, all those trees were secretly removed with no involvement from or communication to anyone in the planning department. So, I wonder how many promises you'll allow this owner to break before you stop giving him what he wants and accepting him at his word? Here's the bottom line. How much has Mr. King been fined for building all these things without permits? Zero. What are the consequences of Cider House continuing to operate without a valid certificate of occupancy? None. Why is this okay? And Mr. Carey, back to your question. I'm not suggesting that enforcement is the responsibility of the planning board. I know it's not. I will state that it's your responsibility to consider any plan or amendment to a plan in context, and the context here is ugly. I think Jody Giglio summed it up best, and this was her emphasis. She said, "They are not good neighbors." John King has ignored town law and process. All the evidence suggests this has been willful. He's been abusive to town staff and officials trying to do a conscientious job protecting town interests. He apparently lied about his intentions and actions repeatedly, and has done exactly as he pleased with little regard for the community as a whole or for its residents and taxpayers. I'm asking you not to reward this owner and this business by discarding the covenants that you carefully crafted and imposed just last year. I'd like you to keep in mind that all the work we're discussing has been subsidized by taxpayers, twice on the same property. King got a state grant to help farmers by providing warehousing and related services. The money went through the Farm Bureau with assistance from Pecanic Land Trust. Yes?
I don't see how this is related to an amendment on the site plan. Okay, that's a different portion of the property, and I'm just going to ask you to be specific towards this site plan. And I don't consider that specific towards this site plan.
I think it's relevant in terms of context, but I'll skip that. Not long ago, Mr. King sued the town for not allowing his cider operation to start as quickly as he wanted. As though both approval and timetable were guaranteed, King canceled his storage lease with Walmart, then sued the town for $74,000 and lost rental income. Walmart is back. And even though all the plans you have, including the most recent plans that were drafted in May, say that everything south of the cider operation is an agricultural warehouse, if you walk out to the loading dock, there's a sign that says, "Walmart Offsite Warehouse", and it tells drivers that they can deliver there or pick up Monday through Friday, eight to four. It's just another example of how, the way he characterizes his operations is false. There are things going on in that building that are different than you have been told and that other town agencies have been told. And if you're going to decide these things in context, you need to take that into account. I'm not looking to turn back the clock. I accepted the decision you made in April of 2016. I'm simply asking you as a board to stand by the decisions that you made at that time, enforce the covenants or allow them to be enforced instead of removing them, and allow this business to be only what the owner promised it would be. There's an old saw that holds, "It's easier to ask forgiveness than permission." And it's become gospel for anyone doing business in this town. It's become Riverhead's reputation, and it's as embarrassing as it is damaging to our quality of life. You have the power to change that. If you approve this amended site plan, you will cement that reputation by giving this bully of an applicant exactly what he wants at the town's expense. If you take that route, you might as well shut down this planning agency because you'll be advertising still further that whatever action you take today, however well-considered, appropriate, and forceful it might be, you'll be willing to roll over next year and undo any constraints and protections you've put in place. I'm asking you instead to please do your best to protect the town's long-term interests and deny this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Sims. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Dan Mora, resident of Baywood Drive, which is just opposite Grapes and Greens, Cider House. I beg you, the board, the music, I can hear in my backyard. I'm probably one of the closest residents. If not, there's one or two Wonders and right across the street, Pier Pont. Other than that, I'm probably the first house. Thank you for putting up the signs for no parking. Appreciate that, because there have been buses and limos, and people have seen them walk down across Sound Avenue. The music can be heard. I'm in my backyard. The one day, it was almost as if, apparently, I will not go to Grapes and Greens or Cider House ever since there was cluster trucking. Maybe Mr. King remembers that, when he put up all his trucks in the parking lot when he didn't get his first thing set up. But apparently, there's a bocce. It sounded like there was, you know, a sporting event going on. I didn't move out to Riverhead to listen to people yelling and screaming. So, I'm going to be a lot shorter. First gentleman made a lot of good remarks, but you can hear the music. I can hear the music. So, what price do I pay as a resident of this town when I have to listen to somebody else's music? And we're not even going into the traffic, trying to get out of our block when the cars are lined up to get into the Cider House. So, I ask you, the town, please. It's not true. I've heard the music. I've made the complaints. Some of my other neighbors have made complaints. And that's what I have for you tonight. You can definitely hear the music. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Foley. I live at 43 Wood Lawn Drive in Reeves Park. I'm a proud member of Sound Park Heights Incorporated, which was established in 1965. I serve on the Board of Directors and sit on the Community Awareness Committee. I serve as a Director of Concerned Citizens for the Preservation of the Sound Avenue Historic Corridor Incorporated, established in 2010. Although both of these organizations oppose this application considered by the planning board, I speak for myself and for myself alone tonight. The planning board has looked at this property many times since 2012. I think the history of the applications regarding this property are critical for you to recall while considering the application before you. In 2012, the planning board approved an application allowing an agricultural storage and processing facility to be built. To me, this application was perfectly suited for this property, located in the Agricultural Protected Zone as designed by the Riverhead Comprehensive Plan of 2003. In 2015, another application on this property was submitted to undertake multiple uses, including processing of apples along with accessory hard cider tasting and retail sales. On December 3, 2015, the planning board approved the preliminary site plan application, subject to many conditions, four of which I'll include now. There shall be no full-service restaurant conducted on the property. There will be no music played outside the building. There will be no further expansion of the tasting room or public access areas without further application and approval by the planning board. Parking on the subject property shall be limited to the paved parking areas only as depicted on the site plan. On June 14, 2016, the owner signed the Declaration of Covenants, agreeing to abide by the restrictions of use mentioned above as part of that declaration. On March 2, 2017, the planning board approved the multiple-use application, adopting it as a final site plan resolution. Less than two months later, another request for amendments was submitted to the planning board, which you are considering tonight. The amendments presently requested negate the conditional covenants mentioned above and agreed to in the June 14, 2016 signed declaration. In preparing to address the new April 27, 1917, application, a site inspection was conducted on May 4, 2017, by the planning and building staff. This inspection revealed that changes were made to the building in sight that were not consistent with the planning board approvals. Regarding the four covenants that I mentioned above, the May 4 inspection revealed, as a result of two pizza ovens that were installed, Building Inspector Brad Hammond told the planning board that the Suffolk County Health Department now considers the facility a restaurant because of the as-built interior improvements, including the two pizza ovens. Mr. Hammond said that the health department has informed the town that the owner is required to obtain a food permit and also meet health department requirements for wastewater disposal. And according to Building and Planning Inspector Jefferson Murfree, the unapproved installation of pizza ovens and photos of cheeseburgers on the Cider House website on May 4 makes it appear that the approved grab-and-go snack bar is only a portion of the overall choice of food being offered. Two music speakers were installed outside on the east wall and are playing music. An approximately 3,000-square-foot outdoor seating patio area was built with sofas, tables, and chairs. According to a June 30, 2017, building department memo, the unapproved addition can accommodate over 100 more people outdoors. This additional customer capacity added to the accessory tasting room is now 12% of the total building size. Mr. Murfree added, "How much of the building can be used for cider processing and tasting?" A sign on the property now reads, "Patio now open." Dozens of new parking spaces have been added. The property is located in an agricultural protected zone. I asked the planning board to ask themselves if the owner's original application in 2012 resembled anything like what is in operation today. Would you have approved that application? The planning board tried in good faith to allow, in my opinion, a borderline accessory for the cider production and tasting room. That approval has warped into wine and beer sales at the facility. It sounds quaint to deem this a tasting room. The fact is, you can look at a menu, buy a pint of beer, fill up your growler. You can also order a glass of wine from the menu. Live music is playing inside. Food is being sold there with pizza ovens to cook it. Guacamole is prepared tableside. An outdoor patio with music being provided carries the customers, the party, and the noise outside. The four covenants I mentioned above that were agreed to by this owner in 2016 have been, in my opinion, broken. Covenants insisted on by the planning board as some of the conditions for approval of accessory cider use at this location have been changed without the approval of this planning board. If the board allows changes to be made without application or approval, then entertains additional applications that negate prior covenants, where does it stop? If you look at the definition of nightclub, it would be defined with live music, alcohol, dancing, food, and late hours of operation. Presently, a covenant that is being honored is the closing time of 9:00 p.m. If you allow these broken covenants to be eliminated in the application before you, why wouldn't you allow a future application to extend the hours of operation? In addition to the planning board being charged with enforcing the 2003 master plan, I believe the board has another obligation. In 1974, the New York State Legislature passed law declaring Sound Avenue to be designated as a historic rural corridor. To quote the law, Chapter 180, "The Sound Avenue corridor's natural beauty shall be preserved and protected for the benefit and enjoyment of the people in the state of New York." Unquote. This corridor's preservation is the responsibility of every town along that corridor. I and thousands of others fought since 2003 to stop commercial development in our town of Riverhead. We've stopped strip mall production on Sound Avenue and Tom Kelly Memorial Road, replacing the planned strip mall with a beautiful September 11 Memorial Park in honor of the ultimate prize paid by Tom Kelly and another beloved Reeves Park neighbor, Jonathan Ielby, who both as members of New York Fire Department's bravest, entered the World Trade Center that day and never came out. The property was bought by Suffolk County and is now forever preserved. The acreage on the west- The acreage on the west entrance, wrongly approved for a larger strip mall, was protested for ten years. Ultimately, the people were heard, the county purchased the development rights, allowing only farm production to be allowed. The application you are now considering brings outdoor noise into play. If these application progressions, giving more and more and more accessory allowances every time a request is made, will create a process precedent that other owners will point to, resulting in more and more restaurants, bars, and yes, even nightclubs, that will forever eliminate the intended use of this corridor. I urge you to stop this and any future applications on this property. I think this facility, confiance to its indoor design and use, should be allowed to stay as it presently is. The Planning Board, Buildings Department, Health Department, and Taxation Department will have to determine what the existing indoor facility needs to do and to pay to be compliant as it is in operation today. To allow any outdoor music and seating clearly violates the master plan and the historic Sound Avenue rural corridor. Deny this application. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for your time. Mr. Foley, next speaker, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I'm Ken LaRona, and I live in Aquapark. The last, excuse me, the last two speakers told you everything that I was going to say, so I will not be repetitive. I will make it short and sweet. As I was leaving to come here tonight, talked to one of my neighbors, told him what was happening. He says, what do you mean? I was there this past weekend. The speakers were outside, which we know now. He says, and they had a two-piece band out there also. Live music outside. I would like to quote part of President Abraham Lincoln's Gettysburg Address, November nineteenth, eighteen sixty-three. Quote, "Of the people, by the people, for the people," end of quote. "You people represent us. We ask you to say no to this application." Thank you.
Good evening. George Barnick from Silver Beach Lane in Bating Hollow. And I also, as Mr. Foley said, I'm speaking for myself. I was not really aware. I've been on the Conservation Advisory Council. I've served on the Town Board. I've been on the Norfolk Environmental Council and have not really been paying attention, honestly, to what was going on with the cider house. And then I saw a picture in the news review of the interior of the cider house, and quite frankly, I was shocked. I asked myself, how is it possible that this happened? This is not something that you would expect to exist on Sound Avenue, which is, as Mr. Foley alluded to, has been designated as a historic corridor by the state in nineteen seventy-four. The unfortunate thing about that legislation, however it happened in nineteen seventy-four, there was no teeth put behind it. The state didn't come along with any standards or regulations or zoning recommendations to the town that would preclude some development like this. So the question is, you know, I mean, how does something like, get that, get there? The fact of the matter is that the town does have laws that protect Sound Avenue, and those are the zoning codes that were enacted in two thousand and four and two thousand and five when I was sitting on the Town Board with Ed. How did this happen? I went to the Planning Department. I did my due diligence with foiling the documents that I was able to get a hold of. And it's obvious that if you expect something to develop like this, you would expect it to be an agricultural operation. It would comply with a farm stand code. It would comply with ag and markets regulations. That's not how this happened. As I can understand this, and if Mr. Murfree, if he wants to clarify this, and I understand how everything happened. There are some people who I've spoken with, and they have some questions about how decisions were made. And it seems to be that the way this actually came about is by somebody in the Building Department using the word "processing" as an allowed use, processing and warehousing back in two thousand and twelve. And that's how this whole thing started. It seems to be then that Mr. King built the allowed use for tasting onto processing apples. And then you've got this, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of problems that have been expressed here about the ability of Mr. King to comply with the existing conditions. And that's going to be something, honestly, the Planning Board and the Town Board should really hire people in code enforcement and really look at this because this is not just the cider house, as you're probably aware, and you must be aware. You drive down Sound Avenue, you see what's happening, not just with the cider house, but there are a lot of other operations that are looking at this and saying, if he can get away with this, what the heck? Why not me? And that is happening. It's one thing is expanding an operation, a commercialization of this, even expanding more than what anybody ever envisioned back in two thousand and twelve or two thousand and fourteen, when this was being considered. So basically, what happened in two thousand and twelve is that processing and warehousing was decided by court decision, also by the zoning board, to be in allowed use. Regardless, it is still a non-conforming use. It doesn't matter, honestly, if you look at the town code, it doesn't matter if it was decided to be something that could be in allowed use, it still is non-conforming.
Mr. Barnick, I apologize to cut you off, but that's not the subject of the public hearing tonight.
It's getting there.
I'm going to ask you to be specific to the subject of public hearing, not the history of the allowed uses.
I'll cut right, I'll cut right to it then for you, right?
Thank you.
The, if you can accept, again, that those are non-conforming uses, okay? One thing that would be required, you would think that if they would be serving the alcoholic beverages, that they would be required to be processing the apples. And from what I understand, they are not doing that yet. This is, maybe I'm wrong. I haven't gone in there in months. This is an article from Newsday of April thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen. Just bear with me, and I'll get to my point with the expansion of the music and everything like that. This is a quote from this article. "The soaring eight thousand square foot space includes a forty-foot bar, scattered tables, two fireplaces, a small table, small bites menu, twenty-four taps of New York State cider, wine and beer." And then it goes on to say that while none of the cider on tap is made on site, it will be soon, it will be soon. So it seems to me that if they are serving cider, they should be required to be processing it. One thing leads to another, and it seems to me that what you, if you are considering this, by having, allowing the outside speakers and the patios, effectively what you are doing really is allowing an expansion of a non-conforming use. Even though it's allowed by zoning board, court decisions, or whatever, it's still a non-conforming operation because of the zoning laws in the APZ. And that's my statement right there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Angela DeVito, South Jamesport. I just have some specifics. Tonight, we've had a lot of information shared with us, first by the applicants, Representative Mr. Lewis, and then many, many of the speakers. And I'd like to, oftentimes, we just take what gets said as, this is the way it is, it must be true. But there's some points that were made this evening that I wonder if you, as a Board, have the information, as in the public record, I was not able to see it. Is there a study or information that has been shared with you on sound levels, the noise that would be emitted as a result of having outside speakers? Have you, as a Board, seen that study? Has it been properly measured by trained professionals? Because sound level measurements are not something that you just simply set out, you know, some guy, his a meter, go do it. Was it on the proper weighted, waiting for sound levels so that it comes into, you can then compare it to our town standard and say, yes, it is in compliance with it? Is that information something that you all have available to you? That study has been provided to you?
Not in the form of a study, but yes.
In, but it's not part of the public record, Mr. Carey? It's not there. Where is it in your public record for the Planning Board?
We often do site visits to verify information ourselves, and a couple of the Board members have done a site visit.
And they've measured the sound levels? I'm talking about the sound levels that were measured by the applicant and put forth as information for the public to understand and verify the veracity of their application. Is that part of the official record?
It will be before it's voted on.
Okay. And who will be assessing the veracity of that record for you? Who on the Board has the ability to look at a sound study, sound level study, and make that decision that it's appropriate?
We have professional consultants that consult us.
Okay, so that will be information that will be available to the public prior to your making a resolution, one way or the other, on, making a decision, one way or the other, on this application, correct?
If deemed necessary.
Why? They need, they say they're going to not, they have stated tonight on record that they are not in violation of noise levels, permitted noise levels.
And I think you hear that we are going to verify it.
And that should be part of the public record, Mr. Carey? Okay, and not that you determine what's part of the public record and what is not.
Anything that is spoken about in a public meeting, your testimony tonight, comments from the Board, the work sessions, are all part of the public record.
Correct. I'm talking about this sound study that you say you will get and then determine that you would have.
I didn't say I was going to get a sound study.
They have claimed that they did a sound study, sound level study. That's what you have to do. You have to, it is a science that gets done, okay? And it's not something that's that simple to do, to go out and do these sorts of things and do that. So there should be some type of data, when they did it, the time of day, the type of instrument that was used, the last time it was calibrated, and what weighting level was used on it. All of this, and this should be part of your public record that we, the public, can also access.
We will consider your comments.
The other thing with regard to live music, has there been, have you received a determination of if there is a live band inside the building and their music is piped outside via these two speakers, does that constitute live music or not? Have you had a legal determination on what actually is live music? Rather than just, I'm asking the Board, is that part of the information you have?
Please, we're not the subject of the public hearing, so if you're suggesting that we do that, please do that on the record, and we'll consider your comments.
Mr. Carey, you're making a decision on an application, and I'm asking you, as part of the public hearing, there has been testimony that has been given here. I'm asking you if, as a member of our Town Planning Board, as Chair of this committee, you have that documentation so you can make a reasonable and responsible decision on this application?
I've answered you that I've gone out there myself with another Board member, and we've done a site inspection ourselves.
What type of site inspection can I ask that you do? It's not part of the record. It's not there. There's no notes. There's nothing.
I'm not prepared to comment on what I've witnessed at this point. I'm here to hear public comments, and I will weigh before I vote on this application.
So there is no record, is what you're saying? There is no record of what I'm asking. You don't have that information available to you, your own observations. You went out and you can make a legal determination if live music inside a building being piped outside is not live music or not.
I don't make legal determinations. We're advised by our attorney.
Has your attorney provided you with that?
Before we vote, he will.
And that will be part of your public record also that's discoverable?
This discussion is open in meeting. It will be.
The other thing with regard to a grab-and-go, the requirement, we've been told that it's the state requires that there be this. What state law are we referring to that requires food be served on site? Any type of food, whether it be a bag of potato chips or it be a three-course meal? What law, state law is being, what state law, what is the law that's being required there?
I think it's a public hearing.
Is that, am I asking, I'm asking, I'm asking in regard to the information that I've received this evening, and I'm asking questions.
We're here to hear your comments.
That is my comment.
We're not here to be questioned by the public. Tell us your position and what you feel should be included.
My position is that you need to find out what state law applies in this instance so you can make a determination as the type of foodstuffs that can actually be, that can actually be served there, so you can then evaluate this application.
We will be advised when accounted.
Okay, I would ask you a question. I'll make it a statement, Dick, okay?
Thank you.
The other thing is you made a statement earlier about that it's not your job to enforce, and that's true. You're not enforcement agency at all. But I would ask, as you have been asked, is to put this application in the context of whether or not there have been code enforcement violations or not. Thank you.
Will you indulge me for thirty seconds? Larry Sim, South Jamesport, speaking for Save Main Road. Mr. Lewis spoke earlier about the patio, and he explained how there was a misunderstanding. Originally, they did not think when the patio was installed that a permit was required. It was a plausible explanation, but it kind of drives home the point that both Mr. King and his attorney were fully aware the second time the patio was put in without permits, that permits were required. You can only use that excuse one time, and it's kind of a slap in the face to the Board, certainly to the Planning Department and Building Department and to everybody in the town, that they think this is okay. Thank you.
Any other speakers want to address this application?
Good evening. I'm Mark Terry, Sound Avenue. It seems like the Board has a compliance issue with this applicant, and I'm not going to reiterate everything that Mr. Sims went through. However, I mean, just an observation is that the sign that read "Buses and Limousines by Appointment" has been laying on the ground for about a month, and it hasn't been reinstalled, which is a pretty important point when you guys put conditions on a site plan, that you want that type of condition to be embodied by. The other issue I have is under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, you're going to want your planners to look at segmentation under this because, you know, fifty-six more cars at two-point-three people per car could equal one-hundred-and-twenty more people on site. And I don't, I think originally, back when this application was being reviewed, there was a traffic study requested, but it came in as a line of site study as far as I'm aware of. I don't know if the whole traffic study was conducted on this site. And it is a problem area. Osborne is a very, very heavily traveled road. Fifty-six cars can result in many vehicle trips. And the reason Osborne is heavily traveled, I don't tell you, is because it's a shopping district down there that people from Sound Avenue go to, probably daily. The other question I have is, the fifty-six more cars resulting in one-hundred-and-twenty-nine more people, is that, are those fifty-six cars appropriated to the patio use? Or what use is being proposed with those fifty-six more cars? Why would they need that? You know, they have several different uses on site, so each use has a different parking requirement. And are you double-dipping on the parking requirements for the other uses on site? In addition to that, you know, tractor-trailer trucks need a lot of area to turn around. Was there analysis that if those spots are filled, will tractor-trailers be able to pull in and exit that site? So, you know, those kind of analyses may need, the fire code on square. So, you know, those kind of analysis may need, the fire code on square foot proportions when you have that many people onsite, I think needs to be looked at. And are there any more conditions going to be put onsite if this is approved, such as, you know, regulating food trucks? And we heard about all the other conditions that may need to be applied. All right, that's it, good night.
Thank you.
I have one question for you. Has a traffic study been done on this location?
Jefferson, what was the extent of the traffic study?
The required, the required application, the board has not made a decision whether it wants to end it part of this request. I think it should be.
Anyone else from the public want to address the board?
My name's Frederick Terry from Bating Hollow, and I also now live on Reeves Avenue. Forgive me, I've got cold, coming down with a cold. I'm incredulous about this whole process. Some of you know I'm very involved in the Bating Hollow area. We represent the oldest family in Bating Hollow. We still own a farmhouse in Bating Hollow, which that big guy that just spoke lives in. He's being very humble. He's the senior planner for the town of South Hole, and he's the guy that stopped Trump from buying Plum Island and some other things in the town of South Hole, but that's just anecdotal. I own Bating Hollow Commons. It's a small retail shopping center, and it occurred because the, the original contract on that was to a 7-Eleven store, and it was across the street from the family farm and the old Zanunko house. So I decided to end run Southland Corporation and put in a small shopping center and a restaurant, just so you know the history. I am incredulous that we now have the largest bar in the town of Riverhead on Sound Avenue, and the second largest bar in the town of Riverhead on Route 58, AKA formerly a bowling, a bowling alley. I'm incredulous as to how this surreptitious kind of activity has taken place in what was supposed to be a rural corridor. The original plan for the town of Riverhead, when Rick Handley was the head of the planning board, was for hamlet centers. Some of you are too young to remember that. Jamesport was going to be a hamlet center, Bating Hollow, and as a matter of fact, right in the area where the commons was, was going to be a hamlet center, where you had two or three stores, maybe a post office, and that's it. Not farm stands that all served beer, wine, alcohol, food trucks, ice cream stores. There is literally no limit at this point in my mind of what you cannot do with, with the uses under agricultural A or APZ. It is up to this board, really, to put a stop to some of this. I would be happy to donate the commons back to agricultural use, because I probably would get more use out of it than I am using it as a restaurant right now, under the existing law and the violations that I've seen in the area. I know a lot about the restaurant business. I'm supposedly the guy that invented the lobster salad roll, according to the American Dictionary of Food and Drink. I've been in the business 53 years, I'm a director of the New York State Restaurant Association, and I've been around a long, long time, three quarters of a century, actually. I would implore this board to take a look at the bigger picture. This really doesn't have to, have to do, in my case, with John King or the John Kings of the world or anybody else. I think the guy, given what he's been able to do down there by circumventing law, is a genius, to tell you the truth. I have seen this happen in communities throughout New York State, because I have been involved in the restaurant business throughout all of New York State, and helping wineries and so on write codes, and helping Mark write codes for the town of South Hole as well. But I would implore you to step back and take a look at the big picture of what's going on in the last vestige of a rural corridor that you have in this town. Otherwise, everybody here, and yourselves as well, probably will start collecting those green retirement checks at some point, and all be moving to South Hole, where Mark has imposed five acre zoning, and you're not going to see these kind of restaurants.
Next speaker, any other one? Want to address the board?
Take a motion to...
Any other comments, last call?
Take a motion to close the public hearing for the Grapes and Greens, Jake King's at the site house, so moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion made in seconds to close the public hearing for Grapes and Greens site house, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Thank you for coming, everyone.
Do the right thing. Towns watch, you do the right thing.
Okay, next public hearing on the agenda is with TSA Capital.
Good evening, Chairman Carey and members of the board. My name is Christopher Kent. I'm an attorney at Farrell Fritz, PC in Hopkog, New York. We represent the property owner and applicant, TSA Capital LLC, who is seeking site plan approval to demolish the existing dilapidated gas station on an existing 14,286 square foot parcel at the southeast corner of Ostrander Avenue and Old Country Road in Riverhead, and redevelop the newly assembled, reconfigured 28,661 square foot parcel with a new fueling station. Richard Solomon is here from TSA Capital, and he represents the property owner. I handed up for your review, so you can go along with, with my presentation, a booklet. And if you look at, starting at exhibit one, we have a location map showing the location of the, of the existing dilapidated gas station there at the corner, southeast corner of Old Country Road and Ostrander Avenue. I've also attached a tax map, a current tax map, section 104, which shows the lot, Lot One, there at the corner. Directly to the south is Lot Three, which is the Riverhead Church of Christ. I also attached there, too, some aerial maps of the area, an aerial map showing the gas station and the new fueling station. Also, we have some current condition photographs, I think, which are the most telling of the current situation of that gas station. You have a nice visual of what it looks like from Ostrander Avenue as you're approaching the current, the current site. You have one that, when you make the right turn off of Old Country Road and you're heading south on Ostrander, you can see what it looks like. And as you're driving along Old Country Road, you see the, the existing gas station. The new fueling station will be owned and operated as a BJ's Gas Station, consisting of four islands with two-sided fuel dispensers, a total of eight fueling positions, a 165 square foot attendant kiosk with a private restroom covered by a 2,628 square foot canopy. The new gas station will include two underground gasoline storage tanks, an electric, or excuse me, a generator pad, paved internal driveway, an off-street parking area with three spaces, a refuse collection pad, an air station pad, and an enhanced fencing, lighting, signage, landscaping, drainage, and onsite utility connection improvements. The proposed fencing will be six foot high, board-on-board cedar. With us tonight also is George Goff, who is the manager of site development for BJ's Wholesale Club. He's here to address any questions about the gas station operation. As part of the proposed redevelopment project on November 3rd, 2016, by Planning Board Resolution Number 2016-115, TSA secured approval for a lot line modification and a land transfer with its southern neighbor, the Riverhead Church of Christ, to acquire 14,375 square feet of the church's 47,600 square foot parcel. As a result of the lot line modification, the applicant's parcel will be a 28,661 square foot parcel that conforms to the minimum lot size requirements of the business C zoning district. A copy of the lot line modification map is attached as exhibit three. So if you take a look in the handout, you can see how the assemblage of the property will allow a much better development of the parcel. On July 22nd, 2016, TSA made application for site plan approval that was dependent upon the approval of the proposed lot line modification with the southern neighbor. At the planning board work session on September 15th, 2016, we discussed placing the site plan application on hold, pending consideration and approval of the lot line modification to create the parcel that would meet minimum lot size in B C zoning district, and allow for the redevelopment of the parcel with less, with less dimensional relief required than was previously approved by the planning board on a prior proposed redevelopment project for the site. In correspondence with planning staff following the September 15th work session, we requested that the site plan application be adjourned, pending final determination on the lot line layout, and the town adjourn and hold in advance the site plan application until we finish the subdivision process. At the public hearing on the lot line modification application on October 6th, we confirmed our intention to proceed with a proposed enhanced site plan with, after approval of the lot line modification. The site plan now proposed by TSA includes several enhancements to the prior plans approved by this board for the redevelopment of the property. The existing open, continuous, paved access to the site along the entire Ostrander Avenue frontage has been replaced with two curb cuts, and the proposed northern curb cut into the gas station has been moved further south, as requested, from the intersection with Old Country Road, and designed as a right turnout only onto Ostrander Avenue. And this change will provide a great enhanced traffic safety. Along Old Country Road, the eastern curb cut will be maintained as a right turn into the facility and a right turn out on to, out to head east on Old Country Road. A potential future cross-access with the property to the east is depicted upon the plans, but will only be opened if required or requested in an agreement negotiated with the, with the eastern property owner of that shopping center, the owner of the shopping center to the east. The existing sewer main across the property and the easement for the benefit of the Riverhead Sewer District that traverses the property will be relocated onsite to accommodate the installation of the southernmost pump island. As proposed, the canopy conforms to setback, setback requirements with no variance required. The required parking and landscape buffer areas along Ostrander and Old Country Road, as well as the landscape buffer to the east, have all been increased in size. The underground storage tanks are now 22 feet from the property line instead of the previously proposed 19.8 feet. That move has also allowed the landscape buffer to be adjusted to 10 feet, and the curb cut and the catch basin to maintain an eight-foot separation from the underground storage tank. An air station has been added in a lighted area by the parking stalls. The previously approved vending pad has been removed, and a generator pad located in its place. The size of the kiosk has been reduced and relocated under the canopy. The dumpster pad and enclosure has been realigned for ease of movement onsite, and a heavy-duty pavement hatch has been added. The proposed site plan and rendering are provided for you in exhibit four. If you take a look at those, you can see how the layout has been enhanced to allow freedom of movement throughout the site, with one-way traffic going through the dispensing area, the fuel dispensing area, and ease of, ease of movement to both, both from entrances and to exits. And if you look at the rendering, you can see the colored version of where the landscaping is clearly, you can clearly see the landscaping along both Ostrander Avenue and the eastern boundary. Proposed signage will be at the corner, but setback from Ostrander Avenue as opposed to the existing signage at the current gas station. The proposed elevation has, has been approved by the Architectural Review Board, as you will see at exhibit five. And this rendering also includes the proposed rock RPZ device, which is located in the center of the landscaped area. Rather than being exterior to the kiosk, it is now located in the landscaping, and it looks like a rock. Also attached for your review, and I'd, I'd been asked about this on prior visits to the board, is, as exhibit six, is a copy of the determination from the town zoning board of appeals, under appeal number 1204, that granted Strong Oil Company a use variance. That use variance granted by the ZBA is without any limitation on duration, and therefore runs with the land. Courtney Riley, the project manager for the site from VHB, is here to discuss the revisions or any questions you may have regarding the prior approval for the redevelopment of the site, or anything, any questions you may have about the current proposal.
Chris, I had a couple of questions.
Okay.
First of all, let me state that this is probably one of the biggest eyesores on the town, so I'm really looking forward to getting this done. Are you going to have a digital price sign, you know, the new gas stations have the digital?
That would be for George Goff from BJ's.
I'm not going to oppose to him, I actually like him, but it's the intensity of some of them. I don't know if the town co-divisioners looked at that yet, or we had asked them to, the intensity of the signs, the digital price signs.
I'm George Goff from BJ's Wholesale Club. Our intent is to have LED pricing versus using mechanical letters, you know, because that's what we do things today. We do not do scrolling, flashing, anything advertisement, it's just for, to me, it's a price change.
Okay, I just want to make sure our plan...
And that will be submitted, and codes will be followed. But it has not been submitted as yet.
Yeah, I don't mind the use, it's the intensity. Oh, it doesn't? Everybody's got it? Okay. Just be mindful of the intensity, you know. And one other question, Chris, the grass lot in the back?
When you say the back, you mean the eastern?
Yeah, the southeastern portion.
Yep.
What's, is that just going to remain natural?
So, Courtney Riley, VHB, 100 Motor Parkway, Hopkog, New York. So Courtney Riley, VHB, 100 Motor Parkway, Hop Dog, New York. So more of the, yeah, we submitted back in 2015, there was the request for a potential cross-access to the PGC site to go through. We obviously didn't wanna build that and we could just make it landscaping. So what we did is we just landscaped it and, and we keep it there. So it would be natural grass within.
Is it irrigated or just, I, I'm just wondering because it might make more, I don't think they're gonna do cross-access for the gas station, it doesn't make a lot of sense. I'm just wondering, wouldn't it be better to plant that with natural pines or something? So it doesn't have to be irrigated or mowed or?
We, we do have it irrigated at, at the point on our plans. If we can remove the, the comment for the potential cross-access that came from the planning department from the previous application. So if we feel that that's not needed moving forward, we can take that off and maybe do something a little bit more.
Yeah, we were kind of land banking, we were kind of bland banking the proposed cross-access. If it's not necessary, we'll get rid of it.
Right, and, and to my mind, it's a waste to mow, you know, water and mow grass there when you can put some evergreens or something and just let it go, you know, natural. I doubt they're gonna do a cross-easement in a gas station, doesn't make a lot of sense.
Especially since there's a cross-access just to the south.
I, I will say the adjacent landowner has not responded to applying on that.
Just, just the south of the church, there's a cross-access there now?
Right, right, so there's, there's access, there is a south of the church and obviously they, they actually also have their own entrance.
There was no response, you said, from the, from the neighbor property?
The civic location for the zirksake. Was this, the natural plants don't need water?
You know, was this, were you, were you doing onsite irrigation in words, using town water or non-usage town water? You own well?
Uh, it was not well, it didn't, it didn't. One change from our discussion, I had met with the Suffolk County DPW. There was a discussion as far as our, our last plan had a, our last plan had the entrance, which was right in, right out, a little bit tighter, smaller and closer towards this entrance. It was asked by planning staff to, to shift this entrance towards the west. We met with the Suffolk County DPW, they were fine, they had previously approved what was laid out before for the Scott and Shop application, but they were fine and, and with widening that out. And you'll see now that we can widen that out. I believe the, the comment or question was the fact that it would be a harshness of the term for someone getting in. And it was fine the way we had it, but they're also bothering the community and doing that. Already, I don't want to react.
How will the tanker trucks load and unload?
Uh, so right now we have them coming in, going and then out, or out and straight.
I, it, yeah, there's no, uh.
There's no, there's only a right answer on 58.
You're looking at it upside down maybe or?
Uh, yes. So they would, they would, they would only go down Old Country Road, continually go down Old Country Road.
Okay. And the existing sewer that's there, that easement, will there be any impact from the construction activities on that?
As far as the construction for the sewer itself or where it goes to?
Yes, right.
So, so right now there's a manhole on Ostrander Avenue. There's a manhole on the PGC site. And what's happening is it goes straight across. And in order for us to, to build the fueling station, we have to essentially do that. This sewer line is for PGC property and goes along the PGC property. They, during construction, we've made sure to coordinate with them on, on the construction.
Okay, anyone from the public want to address this application? Anyone from the public? Sure, come on.
Hi, Carrie Nigent, I'm at 1131 Ostrander, so I'm the house diagonal, well, I'm right across from the church. Is this gonna be a 24/7 gas station? No? Okay. And so you're saying that they can only go south on, they can only go north on Ostrander when they pull out of the gas station on Ostrander, or they can go both directions?
There's two curb cuts, so maybe we should show them.
So.
This one here, you don't get more. It's pretty much, you know, it's just.
So here's, here's the end of the parking lot, this is the commercial, like the platform. And then you're, you're right there, right? So you're right basically, trying to cross the entrance.
They run right into my driveway.
Um, so, so right now they're being opened for us. And as, as you know, anyone, as you're an expert, right? So what we're trying to do is confirm this to them on that. And we give it to us, so someone could come now. Um, but what we really like about states where everyone wants to, they're like, they're like, or just.
There are days in the middle of the summer, I can't get out of my driveway and go north or south as it is now. I mean, just from the traffic coming up from Atlantis and when the movie theater comes in, I'm never gonna get out of my driveway, so I'm just concerned that, I, 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 believe me, I want this because I hate looking, I'm just concerned on how long it's gonna be getting out.
Sure, and one thing I will say is that it's, on tape, you can see everything is moving one way.
Right.
So, okay, so we are hoping people kind of this way. If they have headlights and things of that nature, and then they would either come out and be this way and then this way, and then that way. So I would think if someone would get these two pumps here, most likely, we're trying to return rain on. Like, we're trying to, we're trying to pull them down, like, okay.
Husband to this one, Tom Nigent, 1131 Ostrander. Our concerns are also basically with the, with the traffic flow, but she's been involved also with the, with the old Walmart site and, and we're ongoing with that project also with the movie theater and all. Our biggest concern, like she said, is our driveway meets the old King Cullen out driveway. So, and we see it all. So our biggest concern is definitely gonna be truck traffic. If you're gonna have a truck exit east on Route 58 and he's not gonna wanna go all the way down Route 58 to make a U-turn somewhere, he's gonna cut in into the, either the movie theater access and come out opposite our driveway and then hit the light.
Because the 18-wheelers do it now.
Right.
Bud trucks, all the 18-wheelers, they don't wanna go.
All the delivery trucks now make that U-turn right there in front of our house and go up the light.
So, um, so again, the, the only larger truck here would be the fuel truck.
Exactly.
There's no key store, there's no, um, you know, deliveries, it's just a stop. So there wouldn't be any additional deliveries.
I'm all for, I'm all for the gas station. But once the movie theater and the other existing small restaurant stores that are proposed so far and all of that traffic, you know, that, that traffic study is what we gotta look.
But we're just afraid that everybody who really truly wants to go west is gonna just turn in that curb cut that's already there by the fire stove, come down, go right through here and ride out that side pavement, right? And they drive over my, they drive over the curb, I have no curb cut, it's literally even in the driveway because all the truck traffic has literally stopped. They, I mean, my husband puts up sticks with, with tapes, like, hey, don't run over me. And they just run over that too and constantly run over our, our driveway. And I just wanted, you know, I'm pretty sure an 18, a piker truck is gonna do the exact same thing that everybody else does. I mean, I know there's no reason. I know that's not your problem, I just was curious.
Unfortunately, we can't legislate human behavior.
I know, I know. We just wanted to have, we have an idea of what you're trying to do to make us more comfortable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I move to close the public hearing. Chris, did you have anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
So we have a motion made as second to close the public hearing for TSA Capital. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Next item on the agenda is the Riverhead Ford expansion of the parking lot. Old Country Road to Pulaski Street.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jeff Butler, professional engineer of offices 206 Lincoln Street, Riverhead, here with the applicant.
Jeff, just a question, did you provide the affidavit of posting and mailing?
Yes. Well, right here.
Thank you.
The application before you is to clear the back of these lots to provide opportunity for inventory for the two automobile, automobile dealerships that front on 58. It's also gonna serve as a way, sort of a cross-access to get delivery trucks off of Route 58 through, onto the property and back out on Pulaski to get the deliveries of the vehicles more efficiently and safely to the, to the dealerships. We're providing buffers as, as required by code and we're providing drainage in the back for the areas that's being cleared and we're not proposing any lighting back there or any fencing. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so from our work session, it was my understanding that the main intent behind this was so that they could do the deliveries and go right out to Pulaski Street and exit the property that way.
That's correct. That's the purpose of the curb cut, the proposed curb cut off onto Pulaski from the back of the property.
So my question would be, do you really need to clear that much of that parcel to achieve what your intent is?
Well, the intent?
Could you just come up to the mic and just state your name to the record, please?
Tom Williams from Riverhead Ford Lincoln Buick GMC. We also need additional parking for units right now. We're at the point where we are delivering over 200 to 250 cars every single month. In an ideal world, I'd like to only have 250 cars in inventory so that you could come in and pick one and flip one in and get one in and get one out. But unfortunately, I have red, you want blue. So we do have to keep a lot of inventory in stock and we have expanded now. We have the commercial trucks there, the 650s and 750s. They take up a lot of room and we just don't have the room in the current cleared area. So we do have to just, you know, customers come in, we service over 150 cars a day. It's like where they park, I have 100 employees. So come in there during the day and that's really the problem, we just don't have the room.
I have a question, wasn't there some discussion as to some lighting in the back?
Yeah, we don't, it's not a sales area, it's not for, you know, it's, it's.
Not for security, I mean, I think you mentioned the security.
The lights that we have in the back now are only on until we're open till 8 o'clock. I think they go up at 9 o'clock at night, so we don't really have the lights on. The front lights on 58 stay on a little longer so people can drive down 58 and see the display. But the back is really not a marketing area. And for the security, you know, we used to have a fence up for security, that's when you get robbed more. So the police said, hey, take the fence down. We took it down. They drive through there, they look through it. I think having the drive-through to, you know, the police will use it as a cut, cut through, they'll be there, they'll see it. If we do have a huge problem at that point, I mean, there are cameras, I have a camera guy looking into putting cameras back there that, that work in the dark. You know, I'm not saying that I may never need lights, I don't know, but the idea is I don't really wanna put them back there.
My recollection was that we had discussed a dark size, a dark size lighting and I can, I guess I need, sorry?
Yeah, no, we had talked about it in the original, when our, our back lot now, when we were doing improvements in the back lights, adding lights at that time and we just decided not to, so we just leave what it is.
Are there gonna be any actual paving or is it all gonna be stone?
The, the, there's paving proposed from, that's gonna connect the paved parking lot in the front now to, to Pulaski, like a driveway width for the car carrier to stay on. Everything else is gravel.
Because that's specifically Lot 3, as you have these labels, right?
Yeah, it starts in the back of Lot 1 and connects to Lot 3.
Okay, do we have any other questions from the public?
Make the motion, we close the public hearing.
Second motion? Okay, before we act on the motion, I'd just like to have you guys back in the work session so we can talk about your clearing plan and see if there's anything we could do to maybe create buffers and, and save some of those trees and just be ashamed to clear the whole thing and just for your, your main purpose of, of parking and, and access to Pulaski Street. Okay?
Do you, do you have a date for that?
We'll see when the next available is on agenda, they'll, the staff will contact you. And so we have a motion made as second to close the public hearing for Riverhead Ford. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Public hearing is closed. Next item on the agenda is Glenwood Village, proposal for a new office building.
Good evening, Kimberly Judd, 737 Roanoke Avenue, Riverhead, New York. I also have Brian Stark from Glenwood Village here, the president of Glenwood Village. We have here a proposal to build a new office building at the location right off of Route 58. I don't know if you've ever tried to go back in Glenwood Village and try to find the office building, the current one. When I got the phone call to go down there, I couldn't find it and I've lived here all my life. So I think this location makes the best sense. We had a work session with the board on August 17th. There were some things that you asked for on the plan, which we do have our revised plans reflecting the changes that you asked for, such as more landscaping, counting up and matching the light poles, increasing the 10-foot setback on the north property line and showing some hookups in utility poles. So we have those plans and we can submit those tomorrow to, to your, your planning representative. And if you have any other questions about this, we, we are more than happy to take your questions or if there's any public comments.
Any questions from the board? This one is pretty straightforward, right? Anyone from the public, comments on this application? Any comments?
I just have one, one question though. Where the proposed offices, I guess on the east side you have a proposed stockade fence. What's on the east side of that fence, the other side? Are they tr, are they actual homes?
On the east side of the fence.
Of that, of the proposed fence?
Yeah, it's a residential unit.
There are residential units there?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
So there wouldn't be any possibility of moving it so that, I, I was concerned about the fact that you're very, there was parking spaces are very close to where the entrance.
Most of the, if not all of the parking will be in the front. It would maybe be me or one of my employees who would park in the back. But we have a line of trees, we could, you know, maybe buffer it more. It shouldn't be a big.
Well, I'm thinking of people that might be parking at your, at the, your, your building itself backing out. And you have people that use that driveway all the time.
So you're talking about in the rear of the building? Because the, the front door is gonna face west, so you're talking about the east side, the back.
Well, no, the parking stalls are.
Oh, here?
Oh, on the, on the north, the south side.
What's the east side, the west side?
That's here.
Well, yeah, the west side, yes, there, there will be, people will have to back out.
Into the driveway.
I mean, it's not a, it's not a terribly busy road, it's a private road, so. But there is a stop sign on the corner, it's a four-way stop here.
Oh, yeah? Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that, that is a spine road, I call it. I mean, it's still a, you know, it's a private residential road, but there are, there are a four-way stop sign there now. And we do have parking at the rec center across the street. But it, it really, it hasn't been an issue, you know, with, with the rec center or with residents. It shouldn't be an issue.
Who is your existing office?
Well, if you come in off Mill Road, on the left, coming in off Mill.
Not, not, not a, not a 58.
This is much more conducive to the, to have an office, because we have our rec center up there. Eventually, if we put a security gate there, we can have more of a campus type of setting to the office on the right side. The office where it is now is actually more conducive to homes, so hopefully...
Okay.
Any other comments?
The motion to close the public hearing for Glenwood Village for the office building is still moved?
A second. The motion made and seconded to close the public hearing for Glenwood Village Office Building, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed, public hearing is closed, you're welcome. Okay, item six on the agenda has been removed for tonight, so item seven, 836 East Main Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the rec, my name is Thomas Kramer, Principal of firm of Kramer Consulting Group, office at 54 North Country Road, Miller Place. I represent the owners of the subject property here today. It is a, it's located on northeast corner of East Main Street and Prospect. It's zoned HC, and it's a little over three-quarters of an acre in size. It's presently wooded. What we're proposing is a two-story building. First floor would be approximately 6,500 square feet, with the second floor being 6,780 square feet. The first floor would be occupied by a health spa, health club, approximately half of the, a little over half of the site, the other half is undetermined at this time. The club that's going in there is located just to the west now, right alongside of Diggers, it's aerial fitness, and they just really run classes. It's not like your typical health spa where people are coming and going all the time, it's classes that are run, and, or personal training. So it's not like, you know, it's open all the time, where people just keep coming in and keep going. So it's only, only for certain periods. The second floor is eight apartments, and there's, there'll be one studio apartment, one two-bedroom apartment, and the rest will be all single-bedroom apartments. But that would be all on the second floor. Thirty-nine parking places are provided, we're only required to have 36, so we're a little over the required. We'll also provide two handicap spaces, the building will be completely handicap accessible. Landscaping will be provided, and we'll also include perennials and annuals for color around it. The, the entrance to the shops will be facing the north, facing the parking lot, but the facade along the main street will, will be attractive and will mimic entrances. And also, I should mention that we, the architect did appear before the Architectural Review Board, there was comments provided to him, just minor comments, and he has revised that, and we did submit it to the town, and I believe it's been submitted to the Architectural Review Board for their comments also.
Do they have straight rentals, or is it subsidized, or what kind of housing apartments you propose?
It'll be rentals.
Trade-up rentals?
Yes.
It's not like both the county and the rest, or like that?
No, no, no. It will provide, the entrance to the apartments will be on the east side of the building, the entrance to the shops, as I said, will be on the north side. There will be no entrance or exit onto Main Street, all the, the only traffic, the only entrance to the site will be from Prospect. The, we will provide a future access to the parcel, to the east, if need be, if down the line, that needs to be connected, there is an opportunity to do that. Lighting will be provided, all Dark Star compliant, no light will enter any other properties from the side. We will provide lighting for the dumpster, as was discussed in the past, however, we discussed motion-activated light, but we'll also look at the Dark Star compliant with proper shielding to try to keep the light on the site, so that we're not violating the town code. Along the north side, there is a residence, we will be providing a six-foot chain-link fence along the entire length with slats, and also doing planting of arborvitae along the entire length to screen out any disturbance. There will be a buffer provided between there, where possible, we will save the existing trees, but we'll also be doing the plantings. The large trees will be preserved along Main Street, there will be additional plantings along Prospect, and there will be landscaping around all the buildings, around the building itself. Existing street signs will be replaced as needed, the dumpster enclosure will, there will be a dumpster enclosure, it will be landscaped. We have received comments from the building department, town engineer, and the fire marshal, we have responded to those comments, and revised site plan so far, and they will all be addressed. As I said, the Architectural Review Board was, was met with, and we have provided the responses to their comments, and I don't, I don't know whether they have any additional comments from what they submitted.
Is the second floor going to have it elevated to it, or is it...
Yes, it is, yes.
Tom, will we be getting another revised plan, because this one is dated June 2016? So with those additional comments that we've received?
Yes, we have, we've received the revised plans from the, from the arch, from the surveyor, and I just have to go through them and make sure that he addressed everything, and then we'll be submitting them to the board again.
Did you have copy of the elevations tonight, or no?
I, I have some reduced copies that I can provide to the board.
Thank you.
As I said, those are the ones that reflect the Architectural Review Board comments. They are reduced, I don't have the full set here at the, at present. There'll be, I believe I've already submitted them to the staff, and they've already been sent out, we sent them over electronically. And, board is any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions? Will we get a, will you also get a landscaping plan?
Yes, that, I'll revise that to include the annuals and perennials, there has been landscaping plans submitted, staff found it acceptable, with the exception of providing some areas for, let me say, perennials and annuals planting for color.
Can you just have one more question, Tom? On the second floor, you said that it appears on the plan here to be six two-bedroom apartments?
Six two, six one-bedroom apartments.
That's two here. Six two, six two-bedroom apartments and two one-bedroom apartments. That's on your sanitary calculation.
Okay, the new, the new revised plan has one two-bedroom, one studio, and six single bedrooms. But again, they're all, the sizes may, again, as you know, the health department, there are flow rates depending on the size of the units rather than the bedroom types.
Square footage.
Square footage, right.
Any comments from the public on this application?
Good evening, my name is Lisa Ross, I'm an attorney with Essex, Hefter, Angel, D'italia and Pasca in Riverhead, here representing the property owner, Hal Luce, who is a neighboring property owner with a house at 134 Prospect Place, which is one house north of the property, it's not adjoining it, it's one house past. A primary concern of my client, and also other people that are here to speak on this, is the, the fact that the traffic is going to enter and exit as the way the site plan is set up at this point on Prospect Place, which is a quiet residential street. And their concern is that the traffic should really go on the busier main road, the East Main Street, and that's what we would ask, and I don't know if there's some reason that it hasn't been done that way, but it would change the character of that neighborhood to have that, any traffic coming in and out, cutting through and going up Prospect Place. So that is, I would say, a main concern of a lot of the people here. And as far as the landscaping, I know they were talking about along, bordering along the, to the north border, they're taking down a lot of trees, and I know they said they would put up the arborvitae's, but they don't really specify how big they're going to be, so we're asking for large, you know, maybe eight to twelve...
They will be specified on the plan.
Okay, but we're asking for large arborvitae's and spaced close together, maybe two feet apart, so that we get some kind of screening there. And we were also asking on the fence, I said, now he's now saying that they're going, I know it said in the, the report that they would have to get permission from the neighbor about putting that fence in, so I don't know if that happened, but...
They don't need permission from the neighbor.
Okay, because there's, there's already a stockade fence there, so I think that's what they were talking about.
Our experience with, they only last so long, if you put the chain-link fence with the slats, they usually last a long while.
Okay, all right, and I think there's only one other, no, that was it, just on the, on the fence? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brian, I grow Brook Street, Riverhead. Just reiterating what was said here, I live here on Brook Street, I would encourage any of you to take a walk through this neighborhood, it surrounds this building right here. Any day after school, there's got to be a dozen kids out there playing. Having that entrance on Prospect is going to severely impact the quality of life in that neighborhood. And the only other question I have in the building department comments, it says the minimum side yard setback for a corner lot is 25 feet, not 15 feet? And item D, the minimum combined side yard for a corner lot is 50 feet, not 30 feet? Are they not compliant with that now? Why, why is that in the building department comments?
They may need valises, I'm not sure, but they, are they required, Jeff, you know?
I don't believe that was identified in the review, I don't think there was any need for that, I don't think they're compliant with the setback.
So then, do we know why that's in the building department comments?
I think the reason why they're in the building department comments was that the surveyor, when he drew up the plans, put down 15 feet as the minimum side yard, as the side yard on a corner lot. We do have 25 feet, it was the surveyor's typo that he put in the wrong, in the, in the table, the wrong, the wrong numbers.
So I, again, I just want to reiterate, you guys take a walk through the neighborhood, you know?
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Joe Cobey, I live on 37 Prospect Place, I've been there for a number of years, since 1985. I haven't seen many changes, but this is going to be an obstruction, I believe, to the whole neighborhood. Again, as Brian had said, and I heard Mr. Carey say before, sometimes you gentlemen take a walk of the site area, I'm not here to ask questions, but I would like to ask, have you done that?
Um, myself, I'm familiar with the area, I've driven it many times.
You're familiar, but that's going to cut through a lot of these questions right here. As you well know, then stuff, as you well know, that Prospect Place is a short street, Brook Street is a short street, they come together at a 90-degree angle, there's no other way to turn. You probably realize that my driveway, neighbor's driveway, another driveway, I believe Brian's, all within 60 to 65 feet of that intersection. Of these intersections, of these driveways, there are other driveways that are actually at that intersection, okay? You have the scutter driveway, you have, I don't know if you hear right, you have Andy's driveway, this Andy, not that Andy, okay? And you have a driveway very close of the house next to me, which is on Prospect, it's Prospect Address, but their driveway is on Brook, also very close. It hinders the enjoyment of our neighborhood, we have children, it's becoming a young neighborhood again, we have a bus stop right in front of my house, we have a lot of traffic as it is right now, over the last number of years, I don't know why, I can tell you that the traffic going through are not residents of the area, the majority of the traffic, we know each other, we've all been there. I think there's 11 houses on my street and only seven on Brook, so it's a pretty close neighborhood. So I want to make that point. The design and layout also of Prospect, as it's well-known, the speed limits on both Brook and Prospect is 30 miles an hour, okay? That is not adhered to, I understand it's not your position on that, but it's something that should be reflected. When you go from Brook to Prospect, okay, I'm not terribly familiar with the VNT, but I believe when you make a turn from one street to the other, it should be, what, 15 miles an hour? I might be wrong, but I believe it's someplace in that area. That's not adhered to, I think most people in my neighborhood can tell you that because of these short driveways and the amount of traffic that we have right now, it is difficult many times, especially in the morning, in the evening, to try and get out of your driveway without somebody coming around a corner and not yielding to the person coming out, they just go right around you, or they, sometimes they think they want to come right through my window, I'm not sure. There's another issue, is... This gentleman, Tom, I didn't get his last name, he had said that there'll be signage removal, I believe that was his, his phrase. If you're familiar with Prospect, from Main Street on the east side and the west side of Prospect, down to the first residences, I'm not talking about the hearing aid place on the corner, first residences, the town put up signs a number of years ago because of congestion, right where they want to put that driveway, that says no parking from, I believe it's 11 at night to 6:00 in the morning. They also want to have 39 or 36 parking spots for apartments. Now, is there going to be an overflow, are those signs going to be removed, are they going to be ignored? Because I don't know too many other signs on Prospect to be removed, except those and a stop sign. So when he's using the word signs plural, it's not just a stop sign, that should be considered also. Another issue is we already have overflow parking from the hearing aid place that parks during business hours, when we have the kids, when we have the schools, when we're going to work, when we want to go about our business, they park on both sides, they park exactly where this driveway or this entrance should be, or where they want it to be, I should say. I don't know where that overflow is going to go. I see a problem here with overflow parking, I see a problem here with people trying to come off Main Street onto Prospect to get into this drive, okay, and maybe backing up traffic onto Main Street. Now, there's another issue I have here. The phrase I use is the path of least resistance. This town board, I believe, I'm not familiar with how it operates as far as legal statute, this town board, I believe, can permit an entrance and exit on a town road, I don't know if I'm right or I'm wrong. To me, that would be the path of least resistance. The path that they're not taking, and I don't know how it's been examined by them yet, is the path of a financial hardship and a time hardship if they were to make an application to the state, because Main Street, of course, is a state road. I think this board should look into that, because the purpose of the board is two things, of the board is two things. One is for the advancement, and I have no problem with what they want to build, don't get me wrong, okay? But it also should look into effect how it affects the neighborhood, the existing neighborhood that has been there. And if there is another way for this board to determine that the entrance and exit should be on Main Street, that's where it should be, especially since on the entrance and exits to the store... Especially since on the, the entrance and exits to the stores are going to be there. The issue of, um, dark sky lighting, that was one of my concerns, 'cause Prospect is a, it's a neighborhood, you know? And this is something we wanna protect. I'm here, and I believe the other people, they can speak for themselves, so I hate to protect this neighborhood, to keep it the way it is. If they wanna build what they wanna build, that's fine. But we don't need any more traffic on Prospect Place. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, Jeff, every application that's within five hundred feet of a state road has to go to the state, is that correct?
The county road does have to.
Yeah, okay. Just so you know, it, it is going to the state for comments, because by law, we have to send it to them. Anything that's within five hundred feet of a state or county road gets sent to the, the county.
I understand, but my question is, is the application made at the same time, or they're in a position where they must go to the state and look at it?
They must go to the, the application must go to the state.
For Prospect and for the same time?
Just for their site plan. Anything within five hundred feet of a state road has to go. So, we'll get comments back from them next time.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Avello, um, I live at thirty-three Prospect Place. I've lived there for twenty-five years. I don't have to go into big detail. I am in total agreement with everyone else here, and especially Joe. This is such a beautiful block, and please take a walk. Our, our block is like an old upstate-ish neighborhood. It's really great. I worry now, though, because there's little children again. All of our kids are grown, but there's little children again. This is just a main cause for me, is I would not want that opening to be on Prospect. Otherwise, I'd, I think it's a great idea that they're building the apartments, but just no Prospect entrance or exit.
Thank you.
I'd be, I would be remiss, Joe Cobus again, I'd be remiss if I didn't bring this to your attention. The owner of twenty-one Prospect Place, their driveway is right across from this driveway we wanna talk about. I've been in touch with the owner through one of the residents that live there. She is in Germany right now, but she has given a, uh, an email that was handed to me, if I may read it.
You could submit it for the record, too, if you'd like.
I would like to do that. Do I just hand it up to you, or?
You can hand it up to us, but you can still read it if you'd like.
I'd like to. It says, I, Victoria... Yes, K-R-O-S-H-Y-N-A. Owner of the house at the address of twenty-one Prospect Place, Riverhead, New York, one one nine oh one. Living at this address, vote that the entrance to the lot of the building being designed will not be on the side of Prospect Place, but from the Main Street. That's her language. I will submit this to the clerk at, at the end of the hearing.
You can just set it up on the table. Thank you.
Okay, uh, my name is Andrew Lowe. I live at one forty-six Prospect Place, across the street from Joe. And, uh... Actually, I'm, I'm glad that this is going in, but I'm not glad that the entrance and exit will be on Prospect Place. As you know, Maguires is there, and they park their cars there all day, and those signs were put up, so we could... Make the left turn from Main Road onto, uh, Prospect Place. And the signs were put in there because many times, we weren't able to make that turn because we, we were blocked. So, we were stuck on Main Street. So, th- this idea of the entrance and exit on Prospect Place is, is, uh, not good for us. It, it will cause a lot more traffic. And it says thirty-six, thirty-nine parking spaces? That's thirty-nine extra cars. That's more than there are on Prospect Place right now in, in all the homes. So, it, it's just, I would like to have them change that to Main Street.
Thank you.
Andrew Valkum, at the, uh, Brook Street. Uh, in addition to, um, you know, obviously, I'm concerned about the exit onto Prospect. It's a Main Street address. It should probably, the curb cut should be on Main Street. But, uh, another thing I'm concerned about is, my home is at the end of Prospect Street, and we already have a drainage issue. So, I, I just worry with that parking lot. You know, I worry that my yard is gonna take all that water. You know, we don't, we don't have any storm drains along that road. You know, the water, right now, goes through an asphalt sluit into the preserve. If that gets clogged by mulch, it all just comes right down my driveway. So, I just want that, you know, to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to address the board? Any other questions from the board?
Make a motion that, uh, the public hearing for eight thirty-six East Main Street, be closed, so moved.
A second. The motion made and seconded to close the public hearing for eight thirty-six East Main Street, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Okay. Any public comments on the resolutions before we take them for consideration? Any comments on the resolutions? Okay. The first one is off at the applicant's request, so we're on number two.
I'm with resolution ninety-one, uh, for the, uh, planning board, Long Island National Golf Course solar panels. We're needing to eliminate site plan approval to install twenty-two thousand square foot ground-mounted solar panels, some will-
Second the motion? Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution ninety-one for Long Island National Golf Course solar panels, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is approved, number three.
I'm with-
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, resolution number ninety-two for your outline modification of Mary Ellen New Estate, Foxton Corporation at one, at seventeen sixteen Old Country Road and fourteen oh seventy Old.
I'll second. Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution ninety-two for a lot line modification for Mary Ellen Real Estate's seventeen sixteen Old Country Road, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved, number four.
Bricksmore, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, resolution to amend and approve site planification by shifting a portion of retail, building retail fee two by eight feet towards, air compact to reduce the landscape area at twenty-five hundred square feet of mezzanine to retail two and other associated site plan modifications that are outlined towards at this point.
Second the motion?
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution ninety-three for Bricksmore Reale, retail shops at Riverhead to amend and approve site plan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is-
I'm opposed.
You're opposed?
Opposed, based, and, and not because of what they're proposing, but because they did not get the resolution. They not delivered to me. I have time for the deal, so I'll, I'll vote.
Okay, resolution passes four to one. Okay, any other comments from the public on any matter in front of the planning board? Any other comments?
Make a motion to move the minutes of the August seventeenth, July the seventh planning board meetings, so moved?
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of August seventeenth, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. Uh, next meeting will be September twenty-first at three P.M. Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Thank you.
All right, the New England game's on, they're on the road.
Emily?
Thank you.
Hey, Greg, am I wrong about the, uh, the five hundred feet of state road?
It was referred to that.
It was, but is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, you're saying they, you know, they reviewed the plan with the, with the, you guys decided you wanna see the entrance on Main Street, or the question required the question.
Right, I understand. I think we should at least talk about it.
The neighborhood seemed pretty, um...
Yeah. So, you did make a good point. The address is on Main Street. Talk about it, Stan?
Yeah, absolutely. Gotta have it back.